Good evening and welcome to the Thursday, October 9th Workforce Ethics and Culture Committee meeting. With us this evening is myself, Chair Megan Keegan, council members Derrick Johnson and Sergio Adams, staff Brian Jimenez, and our intern Ariana Costello. We also have Corporation Council in the audience, Rob McGee, in case he happens to come up and join us for the meeting. I don't believe we have anyone signed up for public comment, but we do have a few audience members, so is anybody planning to submit? No, okay. So without further ado...
Is there a full set of all...
There is a full meeting following this. Caucus will start at 6:30 and the meeting will start at 7:00. Thank you. We just figured we'd make it easier on these guys and schedule everything all in the same So the purpose of this meeting was really to provide an update on some work that has happened behind the scenes, to make sure that we have a record that that has been conducted. Since our last meeting in May of 2025, we did submit a formal memo that you folks approved, and we did receive a response from Corporation Council and clarification on the concerns outlined in that memo. We also have met with the Chief City Auditor's Office to discuss the scope of the audit that was proposed in last year's budget for fiscal year 2025 that is supposed to support the work and the mission of this committee. And the reason why we called this meeting is that in September, we finally got an audit plan back from the Office of Audit and Control, and I just wanted to kind of review the audit plan with the committee. I don't know if you guys have had a chance to take a look at that proposal. It is currently under review with Corporation Council. I don't know, Rob, is that still under review?
Yeah, I can't understand what you're talking about, because it goes up to...
Okay. So the goal of the audit was to evaluate the fairness, consistency, and transparency of city workforce management practices, including promotions, discipline, and workplace culture, and to provide actionable recommendations that support a safe, fair, respectful, inclusive, productive, and supportive workplace and culture within the City of Albany. They will be looking at January of 2019 through December 31st of 2024. Their objectives will be to assess discipline and probationary terminations, to review promotions, and advance placement practices, and evaluate workplace culture and differential treatment. And they have provided specific audit procedures in their recommendations. Once this is approved, the next step will be that this is posted for a request for proposal, and when a firm is selected, the audit will be conducted and take place. So did you guys have any feedback, concerns, or questions about the planned proposed audit?
Just brief comments in terms of the objectives. I think to what you just mentioned, that the objectives here align pretty well with the goal. The procedures, the audit procedures, I think from the one, two, three, four, five, seven bullet points here, that also very well aligned with the objectives and some of the things that we've heard over these last several months to look into. In terms of the audit procedures, the next step you mentioned would be doing what and who would have to approve this?
So then the next step is for full approval, so any RFP would go through Corporation Council for its review to ensure both that the funds are being spent appropriately to how they were allocated in the budget, and that the scope of the audit is correct. Then it would go out to bid. Those bids would be reviewed. Once a bid is selected, a contract would be negotiated, and Corp. Council would again have to review that contract, and once that contract is agreed to and signed, the work can begin. One of the things that we want to make sure is that, you know, the funds are spent down within the fiscal year, because if not, we'd have to reallocate them for fiscal year 2026. Anything that's not spent in 2025 goes into the general fund. So no questions for me?
Is there any concern there in terms of the timeline of being able to identify?
If the funds are appropriated this year, that should be fine, as far as I know. And that was one of the things that I wanted to make sure occurred, so I started pushing for that several months ago. Excuse me. The other thing that I wanted to note were discussions that sort of took place between myself and the Commissioner for Admin Services, were recommendations on training for department staff. I can confirm that the city did invest in sending labor relations leadership from the Department of General Services, the Albany Water Department, and Admin Services to pursue certification with Cornell's School of International Labor Relations, so that those staff can be specifically trained and certified in union negotiations and union interactions in the hopes to improve the city's relationship with Ask Me by providing that foundational training. We actually were in school together in September. That was quite interesting. And those are the only updates that I have for you guys. You guys have any questions or concerns?
The language for the RFP, who the, is this pretty much like what we have here, is this pretty much like the information that would be included in the RFP?
Correct. And the only additional information that's not included in here would be the scope of funds that would be awarded in the RFP, which should be $75,000. That's what we allocated in for fiscal year 2025. They would respond, and from there, a contract would be drawn up about, that would specify all the work to be done. It would likely closely follow what's in the RFP. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second? So a motion to adjourn by Councilmember Adams, second by Councilmember Johnson, all in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Meeting has ended.
We're good.
Okay, welcome everyone to the caucus and work session, well, excuse me, the Thursday, October ninth caucus and work session of the Albany Common Council. It's our work session prior to our regular meeting. Ms. Adam Clerk, please call the roll.
Adams. Anani.
Yes.
Ballerin. I said Anani. I got you. Ballerin. Clerk. Conti.
Here.
Farrell.
Here.
Flynn.
Here.
Frederick. Howie.
Here.
Johnson.
Present.
Keegan.
Here.
Kimbra.
Here.
Love. Robinson.
Zamer.
Here.
Ten present, five absence. We're also joined by Council President Ellis, Corporation Council Rob McGee, Legislative Director Brian Jimenez, and myself, Shneko Jackson, City Clerk.
There they are.
Okay, just jumping right into the agenda for approval of minutes from a previous, well, excuse me, actually, we'll start with a public hearing on Mr. Conti's ordinance three forty-one twenty-five. We'll open with that public hearing, then on to approval of minutes from a previous meeting. I'll offer the September fifteenth of twenty twenty-five meeting minutes for approval. Next, on to local laws. In local laws, we'll have Mr. Conti's Local Law B of twenty twenty-five. It's a local law amending Charter of the City of Albany adding new Article nine entitled Civic Inclusion and Rights Protection. That's going to be a referral to the Human Resources Human Rights Committee. Next, on to ordinances. We'll have ordinance twenty-four one oh one twenty-five by Mr. Clark. It's an ordinance, it's a USD ordinance in relation to returning or repealing our affordable housing requirements. That's going to be a referral to the Council's Planning Committee. Next, ordinance by Mr. Anani's, ordinance twenty-five one oh one twenty-five. It's also a USD ordinance. It's changing the zoning classification, five forty Myrtle Ave, and amending the zoning map accordingly. That'll be a referral to the Council's Planning Committee also. Then next, ordinance by me. It's ordinance twenty-six one oh one twenty-five. It's ordinance amending chapter thirty-one, the housing section, by adding a new part requiring disclosure of beneficial owners of LLC companies and other entities that hold residential property in the City of Albany. That's going to be a referral to the Law Committee. Kelly? Yes, sir?
Yeah, I just noticed when I was turning the pages, are we going to, there's a couple of MCs under local laws?
Do I not have the most up-to-date?
It's a local law C of twenty twenty-five and local law D of twenty twenty-five?
I think those are all the budget things. So those, those are all, so there's two local laws that are budget-related.
Mr. Jimenez, can I have a copy of that there? So I make the mistake of printing this out when it first comes out and working off of that, and when it changes, I, I look for a reminder today.
What were your questions? These are what were provided to us by Corporation Council's office. At the end of the day, it is up to the council to, whether they choose to or not amend the agenda, to introduce them.
Okay. Got you. Just let me catch up for a sec.
We should be able to hold them off at the next meeting rather than MC them. Why don't we just do that?
I mean, that's, that's fine. We're going to be working with the budget for a while anyway, so.
Yeah, don't MC them.
So, yeah, okay.
Put them on the next agenda.
We'll put them on next meeting, Mr. Howie.
Thank you.
I still need an up-to-date copy if you could. All right, back on the ordinances. It's there. On to, to resolutions introduced. Speak up, Mr. Howie.
Oh, I apologize. Ordinance twenty-one seventy-one twenty-four. It's on page fifteen of twenty.
All right, now, one more time, Mr. Howie?
Page fifteen of twenty, ordinance twenty-one seventy-one twenty-four by Mr. Flynn.
To be voted on. Yes.
I need a fresh copy. Hold on one sec.
So, one, two, three. Oh, okay. All right, so, yeah, next, under ordinances held, we've got Mr. Flynn's ordinance twenty-one seventy-one twenty-four, which we'll be voting on.
Can I just ask, we are, we are doing all the budget ordinances and local laws by majority consent still, aren't we?
Yeah, but we, we just decided that we're just going to throw those on at the next meeting.
Okay.
I just got that packet. Because, I mean, we're going to be working with the budget for the next couple of weeks, so.
The only thing is, our next, our next meeting on the twentieth is our first budget hearing.
I still don't think I have.
And I just think it might be better to have the budget introduced before the hearing instead of after.
Yeah, no, that's, that's fine. That's fine. I got, I got the big packet here, so we're, we'll do like, the, the big batch of ordinances. It's like twenty-eight one oh one twenty-five, Mr. President, to, what's the last one? To fifty-eight one oh one twenty-five, just by majority consent. No, I, again, apparently everybody else in the room has it except for, I just got it, so. You, y'all have it? I didn't, yeah. And the thing is, there are intros and referrals to finance, so it, it'll, and we usually add them all as a, as a range to, when they're intro'd, and then as we go along, we pick them, do them individually. So, you got, you got that, Mr. President? So, we're, under ordinances introduced, we'll do ordinance twenty-eight one oh one to twenty-five. This is by majority consent, and the last one is fifty-eight one oh one twenty-five. We're, we're adding them. There'll be referrals to finance.
I'm, I'm sorry. I, Son, you would rather wait until the next meeting.
I don't have, the thing is, I don't have the. All right, we'll just wait. We'll wait, because it's just too confusing.
Yeah, it's fine.
Did you say you had a question, Ms. Conti? Can you hear my, I can't hear you.
Getting back to ordinances held, because we kind of got sidetracked.
I got twenty.
You got mine, five fifty-two?
Yep, I got it.
Okay.
Right, yeah. Conti's. So, also under ordinances held, we've got Mr. Conti's ordinance five fifty-two twenty-five. It's ordinance amending chapter three fifty-nine vehicle traffic in relation to prohibiting the operation or parking of certain heavy commercial vehicles on the portion of Madison Avenue. We will be voting on that this evening also. So that is it for the ordinances. Then, on to resolutions. So I have Ms. Keegan. First one's one thirteen one oh one twenty-five. It's Resolution Albany Common Council honoring October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. We're typically all sponsors on that. We'll be voting on it. Next one is by Mr. Conti's one fourteen one oh one twenty-five. It's Resolution Albany Common Council commemorating October as Italian-American Heritage Month. Again, all co-sponsors and voting. Next, Ms. Frederick's, Resolution one fifteen one oh one twenty-five R. It's Resolution the Common Council honoring October thirteenth as Indigenous Peoples' Day in the City of Albany. Again, sponsorship similar. We're voting. Then next, my resolution one sixteen one oh one twenty-five is Resolution the Council declaring the week of October sixth through October ten to be Digital Inclusion Week in the City of Albany. We're typically all co-sponsors, voting. Next, Mr. Johnson's Resolution of Council honoring the life and legacy of Ms. Clara Phillips. I'd like to be a co-sponsor. I'm sure most members, can you just make us all co-sponsors? That was one seventeen. Then next, by Mr. Robinson, it's Resolution one eighteen one oh one twenty-five. It's Resolution the Common Council appointing Michaela Robinson as a member of the Commission on Human Rights. We have Ms. Michaela. Will you, you mind coming up, just come up, quick introduction, introduce yourself, tell us why you're interested? Just real brief, nothing, doesn't have to be lengthy, just introduce yourself.
Hello, everyone. I'm Michaela Robinson. I applied for the Commission on Human Rights. You said to say why I'm interested.
Excuse me?
You said to say why I'm interested.
Yeah, Ms., yeah.
I'm interested in making a difference in my community, and I feel like being a young person, I can give some unique insight, and I'm just motivated to make change and be a part of something bigger than myself.
Yeah, okay. Thank you for your interest and, and welcome. Any other members have questions or comments? Okay? Thank you, young lady, and welcome. Looking forward to working with you. Okay, moving right along, Mr. Howie's resolution is one nineteen one oh one twenty-five. Resolution the Common Council opposing censorship of television. I'd like to be a co-sponsor. I'm sure all members would also, and will be voting on that. Next, the resolution is also by Mr. Howie's, Resolution one twenty one oh one twenty-five R. It's Resolution the Common Council appointing Warren Hamilton as a member of the Community Police Review Board. Is Mr. Hamilton here? Oh, just come up and say hello and. Say welcome and thank you.
Hello, thank you all, to the chair and distinguished guests and honorees. No, I really appreciate this offer, and it's a serious job. My name is Warren Hamilton and live up the street through Fifty-One Washington Avenue, Albany, New York, and willing to help make this process work. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. Okay, we are at Mr. Clark's introduction. It's Resolution one twenty-one one oh one twenty-five R. It's Resolution the Common Council authorizing a public hearing regarding the acquisition by eminent domain of. a public hearing regarding the acquisition by eminent domain of... A bunch of addresses on Rapp Road. This will be intro and, I believe, finance? Which one is it? No, that was one twenty-one. I said one twenty-two? Yeah, one twenty-one...
One twenty-one is related to the Council launching a public hearing on it. One twenty-two was the declaring ourselves lead agency, if I recall correctly.
Right, for the seeker. So, the two, you don't have that on yours?
If you look at the active calendar, one is on the active calendar and the other one is not, so that's, that was the confusion.
Okay. So, it's just, it's an intro. The next, also by Mr. Clark, is resolution one twenty-two, one oh one twenty-five. It's a resolution the Council declaring its intent to act as lead agency for the seeker for the same project, the acquisition by the eminent domain of five oh two, five oh four, and five oh six Rapp Road, which we can, we'll vote on that, declaring our intent to act as lead agency. And that was the last resolution. Did I miss, did I miss anything, Mr. Jimenez, or...
Yeah, you did.
Anyone on the dais?
Resolution, there's an MC for Councilmember Frederick. I can get it to you if you want.
Again, I don't... Was this... So, I took, okay. I'll do it. Okay, like to, by Ms. Fredericks, resolution one twenty-three, one oh one twenty-five. We add in by majority consent, resolution the Common Council establishing the locally based proportions of the homestead and non-homestead classes for property tax purposes pursuant to Article nineteen of Real Property Tax Law. So, that'll be an MC, Mr. President, and that is, that's the last one.
And that's a referral to finance?
That is a referral. It is now seven o'clock. Calling to order, Albany Common Council meeting for October ninth, two thousand and twenty-five. Can the clerk please call the roll?
Adams.
Present.
Anani. Ballerin. Clark.
Here.
Conti.
Here.
Pharaoh.
Here.
Flynn.
Present.
Frederick. Hoey.
Here.
Johnson.
Present.
Keegan.
Here.
Kimbrough.
Here.
Love. Robinson.
Zamer.
Here.
Eleven present, four absent.
Will you rise with me, say to pledge allegiance, and after that, a moment of silence? Can we remember the many families throughout our city? We've had a number of fires recently, so please remember them in your thoughts. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Now, we'll move on. We now are at our, next item on our agenda is our public comment. No, sorry. We do have a public hearing. I almost forgot. We do have a public hearing. During the public hearing, you can talk about, only thing you can refer to if you wish to speak upon this, this ordinance, you can only talk about what the ordinance is involved. Unlike public comment, if you come up and give public hearing, council members can ask you questions pertaining to the public hearing matter. You will have five minutes to speak upon for or against this ordinance during a public hearing. With that being said, can the clerk please read the public hearing notice?
A notice is hereby given that a Common Council public hearing will be held on October ninth, two thousand and twenty-five, at seven P.M., and will be held in advance of the potential passage of the following ordinance. This meeting will be an in-person meeting in the Common Council chambers, City Hall, and will be held on the following matter. Ordinance three forty-one twenty-five, and ordinance amending part three cabaret of chapter one eleven amusement of the Col of the City of Albany in relation to updating the city's entertainment licensing provisions. Documents may be inspected between the hours of eight thirty A.M. and five P.M., Monday through Friday, in the office of the Common Council, twenty-four Eagle Street, room two oh six, Albany, New York, one two two zero seven. Efforts will be made, will also be made to make documents available for viewing online. This public comment here, excuse me, this public hearing is held in pursuit, pursuant to guidelines established in an open meeting law, and anyone wishing to be heard can submit written comments to Common Council at AlbanyNY.gov, or provide in-person testimony on ordinance before the Common Council for consideration. The public hearing will be livestreamed on our YouTube page. We encourage all interested parties to submit written comments by October ninth, two thousand and twenty-five. Anyone wishing to be heard will have an opportunity to be heard at the above-stated time and location.
Is there anyone wishing to speak upon this public hearing of this ordinance that's in front of the Council? No one signed up, okay. No one wished to speak. We'll deem this public period, public hearing closed. Now, we'll move on to our next item of our agenda, which is our public comment period. During the public comment period, you have five minutes to speak upon any issue you wish. At that time, council members cannot answer any of your questions or comment on any of your statements during your public comment period. You will have five minutes. The red light means, with minute, excuse me, with four minutes remain, with a minute remaining, there'll be a yellow light coming on saying you have one minute remaining, please close your comments, and the red light means stop your comments. Once again, council members cannot address your comments at this time. If they choose to do so, they will do so later in the, later on the agenda in the meeting. With that being said, can the clerk please call the first speaker?
Lisa Johnson.
Anyone come, just state your name, you don't have to give your address to state which city or town or village you live in.
Hi, my name is Lisa Johnson, and I live in Albany, New York. I'm here to speak about homelessness in the City of Albany. My husband and I were both raised here, right in Albany. We raised our family here, and then our children left to go to college in the Syracuse area. After college, my husband was diagnosed with cancer, and we had no choice but to come back home to Albany for his treatments, which he could only receive here, not in the Syracuse area. We knew we were gonna be homeless when we came back, but we had to come here for his care. We seen firsthand how a broken system from the landlord to co-inspectors to lawyers to judges, and even the court fail people who are in crisis. Just like you sitting here tonight, your life can change in a split second. We followed every rule, we paid rent on time, we made arrangements with our landlord so we could travel for treatment, and still, one day without warning, we were facing eviction. That landlord certificate of occupancy had been expired for five years, but no one enforced it. We spent a year homeless here in Albany. Some people were denied shelter just for expired IDs, we were told, and that was one barrier to shelter. We were denied apartments because of impossible income and credit rules with the cost of multiple rental applications that you have to fill out and background checks. It drained our resources, and we needed rent, we needed money for potential rent and for food. On top of that, landlords were angry because DSS didn't remove them from the outdated list, creating conflict that we shouldn't have to have faced. While we waited, the county had an apartment available for months, waiting for a homeless couple that they couldn't find, the, the building had said. Yet, here we were homeless all that time. The county never even did a coordinated entry with us. What made the difference, and the only difference, was Taboro Marcus and her organization. When the county failed at every turn, she got it done, and she got it done quickly, efficiently, and with results that changed our lives. She connected us to coordinated entry when the county would not. She provided rental assistance when other programs had already run out. She gets the job done right the first time. I feel that Albany needs to partner with her and her organization, because she already knows how to make it work, and the city cannot afford to repeat the failures we've experienced. The truth is that with DSS, when files go missing, questions go unanswered, and each caseworker has different knowledge, that's not a resource problem, it's a system failure. People are stuck in loops, waiting for supervisors and answers that never seem to occur. Evictions are threatened, and married couples such as myself and my husband have been threatened with separation through different caseworkers, because your regular caseworker is out, and that's something that we shouldn't have to have dealt with either. Homelessness isn't just numbers, it's families and people trying to survive while battling illness and financial hardship. There are too few coordinated entry workers for the city or the county. There's inaccessible processes. Not everyone who becomes homeless struggles with mental illness or addiction, and in our case, it was cancer. We don't need more studies, we don't need more campaigns, we just need action. Real workers in real places, healing and helping real people. That's how you get the people off the streets and into stability. We feel that Albany must, should, as a suggestion, provide medical hardship eviction protections, that no eviction notices for tenants and active medical treatment should, I'm sorry, I lost my place. Provide a rapid response eviction prevention unit, act immediately when someone faces eviction or medical displacement, even a second on the street is too long. I asked the Council to partner with Taboro Marcus' organization, she is the proven solution, to fund the rapid response eviction prevention unit, pass medical hardship eviction protection ordinances, protect the sick, remove the barriers, and enforce accountability. Because if Albany doesn't act, the next family may be someone sitting in this room. It could be, it could be left out in the cold and rain, fighting illness, hoping for real help, and it won't be there if you don't act. Thank you.
Thank you. Can the clerk please call next speaker?
Ben Z. Johnson. Sir, we can bring the microphone to you if that's better. Okay.
I'm gonna say good evening to the Common Council staff and Common Council President. I just wanna, I'm not gonna...
Just state your name and address.
Oh, my name is Ben Z. Johnson.
Yep.
Former mayoral candidate, Ben Z. Johnson. I wanna state that, I'm not gonna go over everything that my wife have already went over, but I'm gonna state this is that, one day you can be a mayoral candidate, and the next day you can be homeless, and that can be for any of us here in this room, as well as any of us in the city. My proposal to the city is that some of these buildings that they have that are vacant, and that they stick in the land bank, I think they need to stop sticking them in the land bank, and take some of these buildings and fix them up, so that they can get the homeless off the street. Ms. Taboro Marcus, as my wife had stated earlier, that her agency has helped us out. Now, we need the city to partner up with her agency and to help the citizens of Albany by getting them off the streets, so you can solve that homeless problem and be the heroes that the rest of the country can follow. I wanna say thank you very much for your time, and have a nice evening.
Thank you. Can the clerk please call the next speaker?
Jesse Summer.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jesse Summer, and I'm a resident of Ward Six, where I cosplay as the Sheriff of Lark Street. Albany is collapsing, and everybody in this chamber knows it. The governor herself recognizes our capital city is falling behind, which is why she's investing four hundred million dollars in taxpayer money to champion Albany's potential. The acronym for which her Gen Z staffers failed to tell her means lie. No cap. Albany is failing because of a paucity of vision, on vivid display, for example, in the indefensible commitment of a hundred and fifty million dollars to renovate the state museum, and the fact that there's yet an application to build a soccer stadium sitting on capitalized Albany's desk, much to the delight of the Times Union's Oracle from Manas. And while a Californian consultancy built New Yorkers out of a million dollars so it could stage performative public workshops on how to use those funds, I've got eight hundred and seventy-three ideas, and they're all vacant buildings we could be returning to the tax rolls while forging a pathway to homeownership for low-income residents. For the doping and addicted social media consumers in this room, you're aware that I'm mounting a party unaffiliated write-in bid to lead this legislative body. To that end, I again invite the Democratic Party candidate, Kelly Kimbrough, to join me for a debate at six P.M. on Wednesday, October twenty-second, at Land Hard on the Greens, so we can lay out our visions for the future and have them tested by debate moderators and attendees. If I'm elected to serve as Common Council President on November fourth, I'll be a force multiplier in advancing the fifteen distinct and expressly articulated visions furthered by you Common Council members as the battlefield commanders of Albany's fifteen wards. Progress will have to be at the ground level, because I have little faith structurally in this city's executive suite to meet the moment, regardless of who ends up squeezing into a mayor's office now stuffed with a half dozen exciting new paid positions. I'll also operate as the city's de facto revitalization czar, facilitating inter-agency coordination at the city and county levels, and publicly shaming any entity which stands in the way of progress. This would entail arranging for criminal prosecution through the County District Attorney's Office of applicable offenses of the zoning code, so intended to facilitate deed transfers from absentee and non-complying property owners to a capitalized agency, maybe the county land bank. From there, as czar, I'd solicit bids from local small-business outfits, contractors, engineers, plumbers, and electricians, intended to divide those once dilapidated structures into condominium-style units and rehabilitate them to such condition as justifies issuance of the certificate of occupancy. The czar would then orchestrate a lottery, pass a legal muster for which applicants who meet specified criteria could obtain clear title to these owner-occupied condos subject to certain temporary deed restrictions. In our red-line neighborhoods, entrenching pillars of the community in these generationally transferable assets would ward against gentrification while serving to rectify centuries' worth of socioeconomic and racial injustice. Other units would be made available for the provision of shelter and services to small groups of unhoused individuals, so as to prevent the massing of suffering in a single loc- single location thereby minimizing the time this body will have to deal with not-in-my-backyard complaints from the likes of both Karen and Chad. Is formally appointing a revitalization czar a pipe dream? Probably. Because even Dan O'Connell wouldn't have had the audacity to create an eighth-plum patronage job on top of the shiny new deputy mayor, council to the mayor, director of policy, director of economic opportunity, director of communications, director of digital communications, and director of intergovernmental affairs. For those of you following along at home, all that could be a one-person job. It would be called the mayor. Who will be getting a 13% raise? And the city's current auditor is cool with all this. And goes out the door, the 13% she-hand loyalty subsidies for the members of her administration who are returning for round four on a virtually uncontested ballot. In Albany, things never change and so I'm torn. Though I'm sad that staples like El Loco and Amoco Sina have shut their doors specifically because of the poor business climate, I'm also only one space away from winning Albany's hit new game, Mexican restaurant, Close Your Bingo. To show you that I mean business as an innovative policy originator, I have an idea as to how we balance our budget without raising taxes, relying on our new traffic cameras. We should lower the speed limit to four miles per hour. At that rate of travel, no one will complain about all the potholes.
Time is up, my sir.
And that's five minutes.
Thank you. Can a clerk please call next speaker?
Alrighty, good evening council members. My name is Chris Francis. I'm a resident of four years at Tivoli Park Apartments and one of the proud tenant union leaders. I'm here tonight because I care deeply about, excuse me, I care deeply about my community at Tivoli Park Apartments and I've seen both its potential and its decline. Tivoli Park used to be a peaceful, well-kept place to live. I loved coming home to green spaces, friendly neighbors, and a sense of safety. But since Opus Management took over, the quality of life has sharply declined. We're dealing with constant pest infestations, unmaintained landscaping, and ignored maintenance requests. The property feels very neglected, but worse than that is how the people living there are being treated by Opus Management. After a devastating fire in 457 Livingston Avenue, instead of receiving compassion or support, some fire victims were retaliated against. They faced intimidation, lease threats, and little to no assistance. It was very heart, it was a very heartbreaking response to people who had just lost everything. And when we as tenants began, began to organize and speak up, Opus responded with clear union-busting tactics and retaliation against union members. I've personally witnessed attempts to intimidate and silence residents who were just trying to advocate for basic dignity and safety in their homes and on the property. We love our community, that's why we're organizing, not to fight but to fix what's broken. We're asking the city to help hold Opus Management accountable for their neglect on the property and mistreatment of leaseholders and their guests. We believe Tivoli Park Apartments can be, can be a safe, thriving community again, but not without real oversight and action. Thank you for your time and thank you for standing with the tenants.
Thank you. Can a clerk please call next speaker?
Good evening, all. I'm so glad I have five minutes. My name is Bevan and I live here in Albany. Just wanna give you a quick update on Ida Yarborough's tenant union. We are, we went to the negotiation table with Albany Housing Authority. We now have a productive, friendly working relationship, I think, to all of those in this room who supported that fight. We've had 15 of our 16 demands met, but the most important demand still has not been yet met, which is a safety officer in the building. We have been unable to secure meetings with Albany Police Department or the mayor's office. And Ida Yarborough is in desperate need of a safety officer. Tenants call me at least once a week where somebody is threatening folks with a gun or people are being stabbed. And these are not being called into Albany Police Department because folks are afraid of the retaliation. So I'm asking this council to support in any way you can to help us get those meetings with the mayor's office and with the police department. Again, y'all know I'm a tenant organizer and I also organize the homeless union. I was gonna speak to homeless list tonight, but I think that was already well-stated in this room tonight. So I wanna move on to Amstel Apartments. The Amstel is supposed to be luxury apartments. Folks are paying between $1,200 to $1,500 a month to live there, but it's a luxury death trap. I have some photos that I'm gonna turn in, they're also on this board. When the tenants first called me to come over there to Amstel, their concerns were around leaks, pest infestation like raccoons, amenities that were promised and not kept. And when I went and scouted the building, I found that their fire exits were boarded shut. They didn't even realize that they were living in a fire trap. With the help of their council member, we were able to get code in there and remove those boards, but the hallways to those fire exits are still extremely dangerous with peeling paint, exposed wiring, metal protruding from the walls. Also, since we started making some noise about the fire hazards in there, they started installing sprinkler systems, but those sprinklers have little tabs on them that say, "Remove after installation." Those sprinklers will not spray and those tabs are still on those sprinklers and they're not consistently placed throughout the building. I have a photo and it's written on the back to give you context as you look at them, but this is one of the hallways that has large metal, gnarly, sharp metal sticking out from the wall. Like if you're running for your life from a fire, you might cut yourself. I cut myself there two nights ago when I was checking out these fire exits on a piece of metal sticking out of the wall. Here's a photo of the unfinished construction on the entire half of the building. This is a fire hazard and we're also concerned about air, water, and air and water quality and mold, but this is also leading to the infestation, especially the raccoons. Here is some terrifying exposed wiring in the basement. Some more exposed wiring in the basement, this is like electric, you know, electricity shock hazards. Also, the back door of the building that leads to the basement is wide open, there's not even a doorknob on it. So I started investigating in there and they hung signs in there that said, "Do not enter" for the basement spaces. But if you go around to the back of the building, door's wide open. Walk right in there, walk right through that basement, open that door to the lobby. So the locks on the front door are absolutely useless. And then for Tivoli Park, we know about the fire there. We've been trying to get the landlord's attention before that fire. We knew that there was fire hazards. And there's photos in here with an email that they sent out after the fire telling folks not to use extension cords, but they had their stoves and refrigerators on extension cords. And there's photos of that in here. There's also several photos of mouse feces all over tenants' belongings, ridiculous mold, and unsafe outlets. So I'm gonna turn this in to be passed around for you all to get a better look, but they're also on the boards that the tenants are gonna be showing you. You know, we need to hold these landlords accountable. Amstel is Hudson Capital Properties as their management, but we dug around and we found that their landlord is actually Sam Dean from a private equity firm. And if you Google this guy, you find nothing. And it just speaks to, like, if you don't exist online, what are you hiding? And we wanna know. And then Opus Management CEO, Seema Grooman, lives in New Jersey where she's in a little bubble away from accountability and is not responding to tenants' request for a meeting to negotiate.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Can a clerk please call next speaker?
Hello, my name is Bridget Savage Spies and I live here in Albany. So I'm here today to talk about the many issues that several of the tenants have been experiencing in both Livingston and Amstel. Tenants have had ongoing issues with serious fire hazards. I used to work as an EMT in Rochester and I have a lot of friends who are still firefighters and EMTs up there. And fires are some of the worst things that they see. They are thankfully infrequent because of, because of largely building and codes. We have strong regulations now on electrical systems, on fire exits, on sprinkler systems, and those things prevent fires from getting out of control and they prevent people from getting hurt. And in situations where those are not active, it's some of the most horrific things you'll So the issue with Livingston Park Apartments, I think we're all very grateful that no one was hurt in that fire, but there's no guarantee that that will happen next time. And there may very well be a next time because there has not been follow-up from code enforcement on a deadline to get these issues fixed. Tenants have known about this issue and complained about it to code enforcement well before the fire happened, but there was also no follow-up on getting those issues fixed before that could have prevented this fire. The electrical work was not done by licensed electricians and tenants in the building knew that. Code enforcement knew that and yet nothing happened. Tenants at Amstel also went to code enforcement about their boarded-up fire exits. And while the boards are gone, as Bevan mentioned, the fire exits are still extremely dangerous. There is trash and debris and metal poking out of the walls, which is not conducive to fleeing from a fire. There's also some debate about whether the fire exits will actually hold anyone as they look fairly unsteady. So building, these codes, they don't exist because regulators thought they would be fun, and I think you guys know that, but they, they're, all of these safety rules, they're written in blood. And they are there because of many, many horrible accidents that we've had in the history of this country, including one in Chicago in 1903 where 602 people died in the Iroquois Theater Fire, which was touted by the designers of the building as being completely fireproof. But there was no code enforcement in Chicago at the time. And so there, the sprinkler systems didn't work, the fire exits were blocked, all because they assumed that the building could not catch fire. And this is the kind of thing that happened before we enforced codes in our cities. And that fire spread to nearby buildings, it was the deadliest fire in American history. And we don't want to see these issues getting rolled back because we aren't willing to enforce the codes that people fought so hard for. We don't see people dying in fires as much these days because we have strong code enforcement. And if we stop doing that, we start, if we get complacent with that, then we end up rolling back to where we came from, where we came. And tenants don't deserve to live in fear like that. They don't deserve to live in buildings that are death traps and they don't deserve to be retaliated against when they try to complain about that to management. And so I really do urge you as city council members to, to think about what you can do to improve the situation that these tenants are living in and to make sure that everyone stays safe. Thank you.
Please call the next speaker?
I can start. My name is Marjani Arington. Of course, I'm here from Tivoli's Park. I don't need five minutes. Unethical, inhuman, death trap, horrifying situation, what I am going through and many other people in the complex is going through, there is no gray areas when it comes to gas or electrics. No gray, no loopholes. I know law, I know violation law. But everyone from the building management, from code enforcement and National Grid is appalling, sickening. Especially when someone is doing wrong and you try to go to the next person to help you and you can't get help. And everybody is bypassing law and code, something that you cannot do. But my pet peeve is when somebody undermines me like I'm no one, but I am someone. And I do not even feel like I am a human being at this point. I know animals get more rights than this. So with these unlawful conditions, like I said, it's sickening. And I'm done.
Can a clerk please call that? Before we call the next speaker, Mr. Kimbra, we've reached our 30-minute mark. We've only got a few more left.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to extend public comment 30 more minutes.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Can a clerk please call the next speaker?
My name is John Cutrow and I live at 727 Madison Avenue, Albany, New York. I also happen to be the caretaker there with my wife of the Albany Quaker Meeting House. And time-traveling a little bit here, back in the 70s, we took in Salvadoran refugees there. And we used to have to provide security and diversions to prevent them from being taken by ICE when they went to religious institutions to talk about what they'd experienced. The, the thing that's hard for me right now is listening to all of this stuff about housing and risk to human life. And what came to me is an old folk singer friend of mine many, many years ago, he wrote a song and the refrain was, "We just come to work here, we don't come to die." And that can be easily adapted to this situation here. "We just come to live here, we do not come to die." And this is what people are talking about here. I know I used to be the organizer of the Swan and Madison Tenants Association back in the 70s. And I don't know if you remember, there was a fire there on Madison where Reggie had to jump out of a third-floor window into the court in the back because there were no means of second egress at that location. And we had one of the longest-running rent strikes, strikes in Albany that actually wound up being ended in Albany Police Court because we had to take the landlord to court for violating the law by turning off our heat and hot water to get us out. And unfortunately, the judge sitting on the bench, which I should be careful not to name him, basically said, "No money, then you get..." to name him, basically said, "No money, then you get no heat and no hot water." And I remember, you all know Roger Markovitz, and I was about to get myself locked up because I said, "Your Honor," I was starting to say, "Your Honor, you know that's not the law." And I know he always used to have a lot of problem with people doing that kind of confrontation and calling out the truth in a court of law. But we all had to leave. We had no heat, we had no hot water, and the government would not be responsible for saying, "That's right, you cannot do that." Well, this brings me, I guess, you know, one of the things that, as part of the Albany Community Response Team that we're trying to put together, Tabora and many of us have been working to try and get a response team to kind of fill the gaps when the help just doesn't come in time. And we have to put together the networks that exist in the community of just ordinary people who have connections, who have the connections needed to say, "Who can do this now, not tomorrow, tonight? Who can do this?" And so when all of these organizations that we know of have been, had their funding just devastated, the question is, can the common council make up some of this? And I think I know the answer, and the answer is no. I would like the answer to be yes, but there will be a lot of performative yes kind of answers to that. But the true answer to what has to happen is mutual aid in the community of ordinary citizens. And I would hope that this council could find a way to support that, even if it brings out angry responses, because people are doing what they have to do to make sure people don't sleep on the street. And that they will then have ordinance cited that can have them arrested and possibly even deported. That's something I would like for this council to stand against and to stand for, supporting the development of community-based mutual aid to fill these gaps that I understand that government may not be able to even come close. Thank you.
Thank you. Can a clerk please call the next speaker?
Kira Bruno.
Good evening. My name is Kira Bruno and I'm a resident at 175 J Street, known as the Amstel. I moved to Albany in December of 2024 and after just two weeks of living at the Amstel, my fellow residents and I lost heat and hot water for three days in the dead of winter. And to my utter surprise, there was no communication from management alerting us that we had lost these basic utilities and no communication as to when these utilities were going to be back on. The heat was not back on consistently until three weeks later. And this was the start of the lack of communication initiative and accountability at the Amstel. From months starting this spring and moving into the summer, our building's fire alarm was going off two times a week, day and night. After over 10 times, people started to stay inside when the alarm went off, increasing the risk that if there was a fire, people would not leave the building. The cause for the alarms was our unventilated laundry room, which at times became so humid that it would steam the room up. Frustrated, I called the building, asking about the fire alarms and when it would be fixed, and they lied and said they had no idea it was happening. Frustrated, I decided to check the sprinkler system in my own unit, but unfortunately, both sprinklers had an orange tab that read, "Remove after installation." Everyone else I spoke to had the same tabs on their sprinklers. With known leaks, breaker trips, exposed wires, poor ventilation in sprinkler systems with these remove-after-installation tabs, I feared that a fire was likely. I decided to check on our emergency fire exits, but learned that the egresses were blocked by construction supplies and equipment and our fire exit doors were boarded up from the inside. Just this past weekend, we lost hot water and heat again for three days and there was not one email from management discussing the issue or when it would be fixed. So we at the Amstel have taken initiative and we started a tenant union with the help of United Tenants of Albany because we believe that Amstel can be a thriving place of community and love. We've achieved an 80% majority, making us a supermajority tenant union. And because of this, as Bevan mentioned, we've been able to make positive change in our fire exits. We'll be hosting a press conference this Saturday and I ask that any able-bodied council members attend in order to hold NIVNE and NRDC Equities accountable. Thank you.
Thank you. Can a clerk please call the next speaker?
Helen Kleason.
Helen Kleason, 817 Livingston Avenue, Albany. I'm a member of a small working group, Albany Community Response Team, which came together in early January. Precipitating event was that on Christmas Day, a family in West Hill was displaced by a fire. Several members of the community, including Tabora Marcus and Tim Doherty, were able to connect with others to secure a place for the family to live and to replace necessary belongings. Special thank you to Councilwoman Robinson for providing shelter to the family during the most vulnerable time, allowing the family to have a safe space while the community worked together to find permanent housing. This situation led to the question, what is available to people who have lost their homes due to a fire? And as we further explored, what happens to people who are in unsafe living situations due to domestic violence, being targeted for violence by members of the community or other circumstances? And we learned, not much is available. Red Cross is limited in what it can provide. I did speak with a community disaster program manager. They can provide some money, quote, "to get them through one to two days," close quote. Red Cross and DSS can voucher stays at Motel 6, which is a hotbed of police activity, or Skyler Inn, which has health and safety issues. There's limited availability of shelters for families. There are organizations that can provide food and clothing and furniture, which is not helpful if you don't have a home. Traditional government organizations for assistance can take 30 to 45 days to process an application if the person in need has no documentation, which was likely lost in a fire or left behind when a person escaped an unsafe situation. Replacing documentation is another process. If the person is able to find affordable housing, a challenge under the best of circumstances, then they need to find first month rent security. Nonprofits have been essential resources. United Tenants, Trinity Alliance, Catholic Charities, Family Promise, Albany Community Land Trust, Gun Violence Prevention, and as you know, several of these groups are losing federal funding. As we go into budget season, I'm here to ask that the common council find a way to financially replace these essential services that these organizations provided. I would also ask that common council address in concrete ways the problem, especially as we approach winter months, that vacant buildings are firetraps for people seeking shelter and that considering the housing stock in older neighborhoods, attached homes and wooden structures, other buildings are going to be compromised. Thank you.
Thank you. Can a clerk please call the next speaker? Thank you.
Keith Irish.
Good evening, common council members. As you know, my name is Keith Irish, a lifelong city resident currently residing in what is known as the Ninth Ward. I'm here tonight to make comments on several agenda items, so here it goes. First, the mayor released her 2026 proposed budget, not advising the residents of when and where again, continuing her tradition of not informing the public on anything her administration is doing until it's too late. I have not gotten a copy of the printed budget yet, but I have seen or read a few highlights mainly pertaining to increased elected persons' salaries and adding six new positions to the mayor's office, as well as a 3% tax increase. Shameful as usual. The salary increases have, I have seen show a proposed increase from 246% to 277%, which includes your salaries. For being part-time positions, at best, these numbers are outrageous. When your finance committee starts its meetings on the budget, I hope you, as well as the members of the public, speak out on these increases. I'm not saying that maybe some of you deserve increases, but not to this degree, especially for the full-time corner office persons downstairs. And if any of you can provide me with a printed copy of the proposed budget, I would welcome it with open arms. Next, I'd like to address Resolution 117-101-25R honoring Ms. Clara Phillips. I do not know her personally, but I was made aware of her work in the city, especially with the South End Children's Cafe. I hope to, I hope a formal presentation could be scheduled at the Children's Cafe Senior Citizens Holiday Themed Monthly Luncheon on Friday, the 31st, Halloween Day itself. Many seniors from different walks of life will be in attendance and celebrating the holiday at hand. Next, I'd like to address Resolution 116-101-25R declaring the week of October 6th to be Digital Inclusion Week, a national designation. The resolution itself does not go far enough in its acknowledgement of the need for digital inclusion across the city, as there is still a wide divide among the different parts of the city, income and education levels. But it's a slow, minor start on your behalf. Hopefully, with the pending franchise agreement with Spectrum, this will change since the last franchise agreement was known countrywide as one of the worst ones out there. Now for Resolution 120-101-25R, a resolution opposing censorship of television media. Wow, this is a big one. Last night, our late-night talk show hosts have been attacked for sure and the general public should not stand for it as the first, not stand for it as the First Amendment of the Constitution states otherwise. Yet the current Albany administration, including yourselves, have also been doing the exact same thing here in the city with its community media cable access channels, commonly referred to as Channel Albany, consisting of three different channels on spectrum: public access, education access, and the big one, government access. But underfunding the needs of these channels, the understaffing of the personnel requirements to correctly operate these channels, and the lack of citizen awareness of these First Amendment rights of free speech with these three channels is just outright sad. And the worst part of this is that you, the common council, have the means to right these wrongs by properly funding, informing the residents and yourself utilizing these sources of information distribution. When it comes to government meetings, only your meetings get shown and with poorly operated equipment to boot. But we never see any other departments or agency meetings, information distribution, and a general informing the citizens of what you can do for them. It would be amazing if the persons you appoint to the Public Education Government Access Oversight Board were actually informed and educated persons on the subject. Maybe someday you will understand what I and others have been telling you, what's needed to be done actually gets done. Thank you.
Thank you. That is final. Person signed up for tonight's public comment period, so public comment period was deemed closed at this time. We'll move. Can you come to the? Just state your name and city, state, I mean, city, village, or town you live in.
Perfect, thank you. My name is Ian Butler. I'm a resident of Albany, have been for the better part of 10 years now. Honorable members of the common council, I am disheartened to have to appear before you once again to defend the dream of an inclusive Albany. For the last few weeks, the mayor has mounted an increasingly heavy campaign against the inclusionary zoning ordinance that this very common council voted into law multiple times. Unfortunately, five minutes is not nearly enough time to refute the excessive number of weak and downright inaccurate arguments denigrating inclusionary zoning that the mayor continues to feed to the public. Some of you may know this as a gish gallop and I hope the council has not been fooled by the nonsense of these arguments. So instead, today I want to focus on what I believe this effort is really about. The hundreds of millions of dollars in state investment headed to Albany. This is transformative spending for our city and how we act when presented with this opportunity is critically important to the future of Albany. It's no secret that Albany is at an inflection point. We've watched businesses leave, restaurants close, and our downtown become increasingly isolated from the rest of the city and its surrounding areas. Before COVID, we could rely on office workers to bring commerce to downtown, but this is a new world and applying old-school thinking won't solve the issues facing us today. Offering even more shiny incentives to large-scale developers is simply unnecessary. Offices downtown are already being converted into housing. Projects like Rise go forward under the current inclusionary zoning ordinance, even without historic building grants that fuel development at places like the Kenmore Building and the countless other beautiful historic properties that had access to those grants. This large-scale development ignores the bigger problem, the nearly 900 vacant and abandoned buildings owned by an almost equally large number of individuals. If the goal is to revitalize Albany, it must start there. It's impossible not to see the divide within the city. Downtown communities like Arbor Hill, West Hill, and South End are filled with abandoned properties, can see it on the map. I find it absolutely embarrassing that Albany consistently ranks at the bottom for racial and economic inclusivity in this country. We push our neighbors into areas so starved for investment that property owners readily abandon their own buildings. At the same time, we see large-scale luxury housing being built in new and affluent neighborhoods. Building new neighborhoods and funding it with state money just to be owned by out-of-town developers and investment groups sucks the long-term investment out of the city and it fails to address the core issue of housing in Albany. Over 60% of residents in this city are renters and that's more than double the national average. As home prices and mortgage rates continue to rise, we can expect that number to only increase. Half of Albany's renters spend more than 35% of their income on rent. That's the definition of out of control. Units suitable for a family cost on average over $2,000 a month and continue to climb at a rate of almost 6% a year. Even if both adults in a household earn 20% more than the median income in this city, that's still unaffordable. Meanwhile, vacancy rate sits at almost 10%, meaning the city's not even legally eligible for rent control. This creates a cycle that traps and punishes low and middle-income families for choosing to live in Albany and has established a new era of redlining. This deeply hurts long-term residency, further destabilizing neighborhoods. Still, development continues, we add to the housing supply, the rents rise even higher, and we continue to offer huge multi-year tax abatements to developers building in Albany. We, the people of Albany, deserve to get something for this subsidization of luxury housing. This council worked previously to formalize a contract with inclusionary zoning. Studies in dozens of cities show that socioeconomic diverse neighborhoods experience greater satisfaction, less crime, and become more desirable places to live as a result. That directly aligns with the goals of the Championing Albany's Potential Initiative, the CAP Initiative, which was what I believe we all want for Albany. At the same time, we must work to ensure that everyone who wants to make their home in Albany has the opportunity to do so. The goal must be to make downtown a neighborhood of choice where all our neighbors are welcome and where everyone can be proud to call and make Albany their home. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. That ends tonight's common council public hearing. We now move on to approval of minutes from previous meeting. Mr. Kimbrough? Mr. Kimbrough?
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer the September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting minutes for approval.
Second? A second on that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Minutes approved. Moving on to considerations of local laws. Mr. Conti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice the introduction of Local Law B of two thousand and twenty-five.
Can a clerk please read the local law?
A local law amending the Charter of the City of Albany by adding a new Article Nine entitled Civic Inclusion and Rights Protection.
Thank you. Mr. Kimbrough?
Thank you. That will be a referral to our Human Resources, Human Rights Committee.
Thank you. Continuing on with local laws, Mr. Kimbrough?
Yes, thank you, sir. I'll do the, I'm just gonna do an MC and add all of the MCs, if that's okay with you. Okay, I'd like to add, by majority consent, Local Laws C of two thousand and twenty-five, Local Law D of two thousand and twenty-five, ordinances twenty-seven, one oh one, twenty-five through ordinance fifty-eight, one oh one, twenty-five, as well as Resolution one twenty-three, one oh one, twenty-five. I'd like to add those by majority consent.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Okay, that's that. Moving on to reports of standing committees. Ms.?
I have to intro.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I know, I didn't read the local laws that were being added to the agenda. Can a clerk please read Local Laws C and Local Laws D?
Don't I have to introduce them, or?
You introduce them.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to add, on behalf of Ms. Frederick, Local Law C of two thousand and twenty-five for introduction.
Can a clerk please read the local laws?
A local law amending Section forty-two dash two-six-three, annual salaries elective officers of the Code of the City of Albany in relation to salaries of elective officials.
Go ahead. That will be a referral to the council's Finance Committee. You want me to go to the next local law?
A local law amending the curbside waste collection fee.
Ms. Kimbrough?
That also will be a referral to the council's Finance Committee.
Thank you. Now, we can move on to Ms. Farrell with the reports of standing committees.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Law, Buildings, and Code Committee met on September thirtieth. We discussed ordinance twenty-one, seventy-one, twenty-four by Councilmember Frederick in relation to truck parking restrictions that passed through the committee unanimously with a positive recommendation. We also discussed ordinance five, fifty-two, twenty-five by Councilmember Conti, which deals with heavy commercial vehicles on a portion of Madison Avenue that also passed through the committee unanimously with a positive recommendation. And we had a discussion on ordinance twenty-ninety-one, twenty-five by Councilmember Conti, which would rename Columbus Day to Francis Xavier Cabrini Day. We are not passing that through yet, but Councilmember Conti is, will be amending it to be Cabrini Day and Indigenous Peoples' Day. And we look forward to continuing that discussion at a future point.
Thank you. Any further? Ms. Keegan?
Thank you. The Workforce Ethics and Culture Committee met this evening at six P.M. to provide an update on the status of the expenditure of the audit funds that we secured in, for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five, to assist with the work of the committee.
Thank you. Any further? Seeing none, we'll move on to the ordinances section. Bear with me, because I got a lot of ordinances that I want to make sure that the MC, that we get them all. So, starting with the introductions of ordinances, Mr. Kimbrough?
Mr. Clerk?
The ordinance twenty-seven, one oh one, point that we emceed already.
Yeah, but we got a couple in the intro section that.
Oh, twenty-four, yes.
Starting with Mr. Clerk.
Sorry, Mr. Clerk. Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to notice ordinance twenty-four, one zero one, twenty-five, and ask for its introduction.
Thank you. Can a clerk please read the ordinance?
An ordinance amending Chapter three-seventy-five Unified Sustainable Development Ordinance of the Code of the City of Albany in relation to returning the affordable housing requirement to its original level.
Ms. Kimbrough?
Thank you, Mr. President. We refer the council's Planning Committee.
Thank you. Continuing on, Mr. Anani?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice ordinance twenty-five, one oh one, dot twenty-five, and ask for its introduction.
Thank you. Can a clerk please read the ordinance?
An ordinance amending Chapter three-seventy-five Unified Sustainable Development Ordinance of the Code of the City of Albany by changing the zoning classification of parcel known as five-forty Myrtle Avenue Tax Map Parcel Number sixty-five dot seven-seven dot two, dash two, dash forty-seven, from residential two-unit R-two to residential multi-unit RM, and amending the zoning map accordingly.
Mr. Kimbrough?
Thank you, Mr. President. It's a referral to the council's Planning Committee.
Thank you. And, Mr. Kimbrough, you have the next ordinance introduction?
Yes, sir, thank you. I notice ordinance twenty-six, one oh one, twenty-five, and ask for its introduction.
Thank you. Can a clerk please read the ordinance?
An ordinance amending Chapter two-thirty-one Housing of the Code of the City of Albany by adding a new Part Seven thereto requiring the disclosure of beneficial owners of limited liability companies and other entities that hold residential properties in the city of Albany.
Thank you. Mr. Kimbrough?
Thank you, Mr. President. It's a referral to council's Law, Buildings, and Code Enforcement Committee.
Thank you. And, Mr. Kimbrough, for Ms. Frederick?
Yes, I notice ordinance twenty-seven, one oh one, twenty-five through ordinance fifty-eight, one oh one, twenty-five for purposes of introduction.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the ordinance?
An ordinance adopting the City of Albany's budget for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six as presented by the mayor on October first, two thousand and twenty-five.
Thank you. Is there, Mr. Kimbrough?
Referral to Finance?
Thank you. And that is conclusion, conclusion of our ordinance of introduction. Now, we'll move on to ordinances held. Mr. Flynn?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice ordinance twenty-one, seventy-one, twenty-four, and ask for its passage.
Are we not introducing the rest of it?
Which ones?
The bonds?
The bonds.
Oh, I don't have it. So what is that?
But I thought.
It is not here. We can do it. Sorry, Mr. Uh.
To read them, right?
Yes. Mr. Kimbrough, since you're sitting in for Ms. Frederick's.
Yeah, so, so I introed them as a range, so I think she just has to read them. And then I refer them at once.
It's kind of early for this, right?
Can the clerk please read the ordinances?
An ordinance authorizing certain purchases by the City of Albany, New York, at a maximum estimated cost of one million nine hundred and thirteen thousand, and authorizing the lease financing or issuance of one million nine hundred and thirteen thousand serial bond of said city to pay the costs thereof: police, public safety, IT system. An ordinance authorizing certain purchases by the City of Albany, New York, at a maximum estimated cost of four hundred thousand, and authorizing the lease financing of the issuance of four hundred thousand serial bond of said city to pay the costs thereof: police, police station, infrastructure improvements. An ordinance authorizing certain purchases by the City of Albany, New York, at a maximum estimated cost of two million, and authorizing the lease financing or issuance of two million serial bond of said city to pay the costs thereof: police, vehicles, and equipment replacement. An ordinance.
Can we, the num, the ordinance number, can you throw that in there?
Yes, I can. I just read ordinance twenty-eight, one oh one, twenty-five, twenty-nine, one oh one, twenty-five, thirty, one oh one, twenty-five. Ordinance number thirty-one, one oh one, twenty-five, an ordinance authorizing certain purchases by the City of Albany, New York, at a maximum estimated cost of one million five hundred thousand, and authorizing the lease financing or issuance of one million five hundred thousand serial bond of said city to pay the costs thereof: fire, emergency services, fire apparatus. Ordinance thirty-two, one oh one, twenty-five, an ordinance authorizing certain purchases by the City of Albany, New York, at a maximum estimated cost of four hundred thousand, and authorizing the lease financing or issuance of four hundred thousand serial bond of said city to pay the costs thereof: fire, emergency services, fire station, infrastructure improvements. An ordinance authorizing certain purchases by the City of Albany, New York, at a maximum estimated cost of two hundred and fifty thousand, and authorizing the lease financing or issuance of two hundred and fifty thousand serial bond of said city to pay the costs thereof: engineering, maintenance equipment. An ordinance authorizing certain purchases by the City of Albany, New York, at a maximum estimated cost of four hundred thousand, and authorizing the lease financing or issuance of four hundred thousand serial bond of said city to pay the costs thereof: engineering, roadway striping. An ordinance authorizing certain purchases by the City of Albany, New York, at a maximum estimated cost of three hundred thousand, and authorizing the lease financing or issuance of three hundred thousand serial bond of said city to pay the costs thereof: engineering, traffic safety equipment. And, I'm sorry, I just read ordinance thirty-two, one oh one, twenty-five through thirty-five, one oh one, twenty-five. Ordinance thirty-six, one oh one, twenty-five, an ordinance authorizing certain purchases of the City of Albany, New York, at a maximum estimated cost of one million five hundred thousand, and authorizing the lease financing or issuance of one million five hundred thousand serial bond of said city to pay the costs thereof: engineering, traffic signals improvement. Ordinance thirty-seven, one oh one, twenty-five, an ordinance authorizing certain purchases by the City of Albany, New York, at a maximum estimated cost of one million, and authorizing the lease financing or issuance of one million serial, serial bond of said city to pay the costs thereof: engineering, traffic reduction. Ordinance thirty-eight, one oh one, twenty-five, an ordinance authorizing certain purchases by the City of Albany, New York, at a maximum estimated cost of one million, and authorizing the lease financing or issuance of one million serial bond of said city to pay the costs thereof: engineering, traffic studies. Ordinance thirty-nine, one oh one, twenty-five, an ordinance authorizing certain purchases of the, by the City of Albany, New York, at a maximum estimated cost of four million five hundred thousand, and authorizing the lease financing or issuance of four million five hundred thousand serial bond of said city to pay the costs thereof: engineering, renovations to city buildings. Ordinance forty, one oh one, twenty-five, an ordinance authorizing certain purchases by the City of Albany, New York, at a maximum estimated cost of three hundred, three hundred and thirty thousand, and authorizing the lease financing of the, or the issuance of fifty-five thousand serial bond of said city to pay the costs thereof: engineering, climate smart community planning. Ordinance forty-one, one oh one, twenty-five, an ordinance authorizing certain purchases by the City of Albany, New York, at a maximum estimated cost of one million, and authorizing the lease financing or issuance of one million serial bond of said city to pay the costs thereof: engineering, ADA compliance. Ordinance forty-two, one oh one, twenty-five, an ordinance authorizing certain purchases by the City of Albany, New York, at a maximum estimated cost of six hundred and fifty thousand, and authorizing the lease financing or the issuance of six hundred and fifty thousand serial bond of said city to pay the costs thereof: engineering, sidewalk reconstruction. Ordinance forty-three, one oh one, twenty-five, an ordinance authorizing certain purchases by the City of Albany, New York, at a maximum estimated cost of fourteen million four hundred and sixty-eight thousand, and authorizing the lease financing or the issuance of five million serial bond of said city to pay the costs thereof: engineering, street reconstructions. Ordinance forty-four, one oh one, twenty-five, an ordinance authorizing certain purchases by the City of Albany, New York, at a maximum estimated cost of six hundred and fifty thousand, and authorizing the lease financing or the issuance of six hundred and fifty thousand serial bond of said city to pay the costs thereof: engineering, streetlights, capital Ordinance forty-five, one oh one, twenty-five, an ordinance authorizing certain purchases by the City of Albany, New York, at a maximum estimated cost of seven million seven hundred and thirty-two thousand, and authorizing the lease financing or issuance of six million dollar serial bond of said city to pay the costs thereof: engineering, Washington Park traffic reconfiguration. Ordinance forty-six, one oh one, twenty-five, an ordinance authorizing certain purchases by the City of Albany, New York, at a maximum estimated cost of one million, and authorizing the lease financing or the issuance of one million serial bond of said city to pay the costs thereof: general services, Capitol Hills rehabilitation and improvements. Ordinance forty-seven, one oh one, twenty-five, an ordinance authorizing certain purchases by the City of Albany, New York, at a maximum estimated cost of five hundred thousand, and authorizing the lease financing or the issuance of five hundred thousand serial bond of said city to pay the costs thereof: general services, automated public restrooms. Ordinance forty-eight, one oh one, twenty-five, an ordinance authorizing certain purchases by the City of Albany, New York, at a maximum estimated cost of five hundred thousand, and authorizing the lease financing or the issuance of five hundred thousand serial bond of said city to pay the costs thereof: general services, citywide irrigation system. Ordinance forty-nine, one oh one, twenty-five, an ordinance authorizing certain purchases by the City of Albany, New York, at a maximum estimated cost of five hundred thousand, and authorizing the lease financing or the issuance of five hundred thousand serial bond of said city to pay the costs thereof: general services, Ridgefield Park restroom rehabilitation. Ordinance fifty-one, excuse me, ordinance fifty, one oh one, twenty-five, an ordinance authorizing certain purchases by the City of Albany, New York, at a maximum estimated cost of two hundred and fifty thousand, and authorizing the lease financing or the issuance of two hundred and fifty thousand serial bond of said city to pay the costs thereof: general services, security fence installation. Ordinance fifty-one, one oh one, twenty-five, an ordinance authorizing certain purchases by the City of Albany, New York, at a maximum estimated cost of three hundred thousand, and authorizing the lease financing or the issuance of three hundred thousand serial bond of said city to pay the costs thereof: general services, storage structures. Ordinance fifty-two, one oh one, twenty-five, an ordinance authorizing certain purchases by the City of Albany, New York, at a maximum estimated cost of two million, and authorizing the lease financing or the issuance of two million serial bond of said city to pay the costs thereof: general services, street sidewalk resurfacing. Ordinance fifty-three, one oh one, twenty-five, an ordinance authorizing certain purchases by the City of Albany, New York, at a maximum estimated cost of two hundred and fifty, fifty thousand, and authorizing the lease financing or the issuance of two hundred and fifty thousand serial bond of said city to pay the costs thereof: general services, street scape and park fixtures. Ordinance fifty-four, one oh one, twenty-five, an ordinance authorizing certain purchases by the City of Albany, New York, at a maximum estimated cost of two hundred and fifty thousand, and authorizing the lease financing or the issuance of sixty-two thousand five hundred dollar serial bond of said city to pay the costs thereof: neighborhood services, Lincoln Park Connector. Ordinance fifty-five, one oh one, twenty-five, an ordinance authorizing certain purchases by the City of Albany, New York, at a maximum estimated cost of one hundred and thirty-five thousand, and authorizing the lease financing or the issuance of one hundred and thirty-five thousand serial bond of said city to pay the costs thereof: recreation, court resurfacing. Fifty-six, one oh one, twenty-five, an ordinance authorizing certain purchases by the City of Albany, New York, at a maximum estimated cost of one hundred thousand, and authorizing the lease financing or the issuance of one hundred thousand serial bond of said city to pay the costs thereof: recreation, maintenance equipment. Fifty-seven, one oh one, twenty-five, an ordinance authorizing certain purchases by the City of Albany, New York, at a maximum estimated cost of two hundred and fifty thousand, and authorizing the lease financing or the issuance of two hundred and fifty thousand serial bond of said city to pay the costs thereof: recreation, playgrounds. Fifty-eight, one oh one, twenty-five, an ordinance authorizing certain purchases by the City of Albany, New York, at a maximum estimated cost of two hundred thousand, and authorizing the lease financing or the issuance of two hundred thousand serial bond of said city to pay the costs thereof: recreation, spray pads.
Thank you. Mr. Kimbrough?
Thank you, Mr. President. They were all referrals to the council's Finance Committee.
Thank you. Finance?
Finance. Did I not say Finance?
I don't, Mr. Holy might have heard different. Moving on to ordinance, ordinance is held. Mr. Flynn?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice ordinance twenty-one, seventy-one, twenty-four, and ask for its passage.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the ordinance?
An ordinance amending Article Two Traffic Regulations of Chapter three-fifty-nine, Vehicles and Traffic of the Code of the City of Albany in relation to truck parking restrictions.
Discussion on this ordinance. Here none, can the clerk please call a roll?
Adams?
Yes.
Anani?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Conti?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Howie?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Keegan?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Keegan.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Kimbrough.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Zamer.
Yes.
Eleven, any affirmative?
Ordinance passes. Mr. Conti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice ordinance five point fifty-two point twenty-five, request passage and a roll call vote thereon.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the ordinance?
An ordinance amending Chapter Three-Fifty-Nine, Vehicles and Traffic of the Code of the City of Albany, in relation to prohibiting the operation or parking of certain heavy commercial vehicles on the, on a portion of Madison Avenue.
Discussion on this ordinance. Seeing none, Mr. Adams?
I'd like to ask a question. The question is not a sponsor.
This is not the time to ask questions. You should have asked questions of the sponsor before. Are you...
This is my first time recognizing this as being presented, so just want to have a last-minute clarification.
What do you mean being presented? It went through committee? It's, I mean, it's been on the agenda for a while.
Again, this is my first time seeing this.
I'm not going to allow you to ask a question when we're ready to vote on the bill, on the ordinance, if you want clarification of something that's different.
That's what I'm asking for, clarification.
What is the clarification of what?
The clarification is in regards to the streets listed on here, and if there's any possible way that there's additions that can also be adjusted to account for the area.
Not at this time.
Okay.
Thank you. Can the clerk call the roll, please?
Adams. Anani.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Conti.
Yes.
Pharaoh.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Flynn.
Yes.
Howie.
Yes.
Johnson.
Present.
Keegan.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Kimbrough.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Zamer.
Yes.
Nine, any affirmative, two present.
Ordinance passes. Can, um, sorry, Mr. Kimbrough?
Thank you, Mr. President. The rest of the ordinance is on the agenda or held.
Thank you. Moving on to resolutions introduced. Ms. Keegan.
That's correct. I would like to notice Resolution One-One-Three, One-O-One-Twenty-Five-R, and ask for its passage.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the resolution? One thirteen. Did she say one?
I said One-One-Three, One-O-One-Twenty-Five-R.
Thank you. A resolution of the Albany Common Council honoring October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Thank you. Discussion on this resolution. Seeing none, since we're all co-sponsors on this, this will be a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Continuing on, Mr. Conti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer Resolution One-Fourteen Point One-Zero-One Point Twenty-Four-R, ask its passage and a vote thereon.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
A resolution of the Albany Common Council commemorating October as Italian-American Heritage Month.
Discussion on this resolution. Seeing none, and you're all co-sponsors on this one as well, we'll take a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Continuing on with resolution introduced, since Ms. Frederick is here, Mr. Kimbrough will do in her honor. Mr. Kimbrough?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I notice Resolution One-One-Five, One-O-One-Twenty-Five-R, and ask for its passage.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
A resolution of the Common Council honoring October thirteenth as Indigenous People Day in the City of Albany.
Any discussion on this resolution? Seeing none, since you're all co-sponsors, another voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Continuing on, Mr. Kimbrough?
Yes, sir. I notice Resolution One-One-Six, One-O-One-Twenty-Five, and ask for its passage.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
A resolution of the Common Council declaring the week of October sixth through October tenth, twenty twenty-five, to be Digital Inclusion Week in the City of Albany.
Any discussion on this resolution? Mr. Kimbrough?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This resolution recognizes October sixth through tenth as Digital Inclusion Week in the City of Albany. It's an opportunity to highlight the importance of ensuring that every resident, regardless of income, age, or neighborhood, has access to affordable internet, digital devices, and the skills needed to use them. In today's world, digital access is essential for education, employment, healthcare, and civic participation. By joining the National Digital Inclusion Week Initiative, we are reaffirming Albany's commitment to closing the digital divide and supporting the work of our community partners who make this goal a reality. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, since you're all co-sponsors, voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution passes. Continuing on, Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice Resolution One-Seventeen Point One-O-One Point Twenty-Five-R, and I ask for its introduction and passage.
Can the clerk please read the resolution?
A resolution of the Common Council honoring the life and legacy of Ms. Clara Phillips.
Discussion on this resolution. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you. Ms. Clara Phillips is one of the sweetest people that lived in the city of Albany, and when I think about Ms. Phillips, I just think about the kids that she produced in our community. They never have an aggressive bone in their body. Ms. Clara Phillips was a person that you can go to about one thing, and she would just volunteer to do ten more things. And I think in the South End, she is credited with being part of the inspiration for Mississippi Day, and Mississippi Day has become very important because a lot of people don't know how their families migrated to Albany through, from Mississippi. And I think that, uh, that event has been very informative. It is a family event that many people throughout the city look forward to each year. And so, I felt like it was important for us to do a resolution on her behalf, but I'm hoping, as a city, that we do something that would carry on her name, because she was a giant in our neighborhood, one of the kindest people, and just going to be a smile on her face, and she was a very stern supporter of mine. So, you know, we, we, we lose people every day, but not the type of person that Ms. Phillips was. So, I thank everyone for being a supporter of this resolution, and I hope it brings the peace and joy to her family, because they shared her with us for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, since you're all co-sponsors, voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution passes. Continuing on, Mr. Kimbrough, you're going to do Mr. Robinson's?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I notice Resolution One-One-Eight, One-O-One-Twenty-Five, and ask for its passage.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
A resolution of the Common Council appointing Michaela Robinson as a member of the Commission on Human Rights.
Is there any discussion on this resolution? Ms. Keegan?
I would just, since our chair is not here, I would just like to note that Ms. Robinson came in to interview for the committee, and she's just such an exemplary young person, and we're so grateful for her willingness to serve the City of Albany, particularly on this issue. So, thank you.
Thank you for that. Mr. Johnson?
And I just want to add, she didn't say much today, but her interview, she showed a lot of promise and very impressive in some of the things that she talked about. So, great choice.
Thank you. Can the clerk please call the roll?
Adams.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Anani.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Clark.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Conti.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Pharaoh.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Uh, Flynn.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Howie.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Johnson.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Keegan.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Kimbrough.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Zamer.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Eleven, any affirmative?
Resolution passes. Congratulations. Welcome aboard. Ms. Robinson. Continuing on with resolutions introduced, Mr. Holley?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice Resolution One-Nineteen Dot One-O-One Dot Twenty-Five-R, and ask for its introduction and vote.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
A resolution of the Common Council opposing censorship on television media.
Discussion on this resolution. Mr. Holley?
Yeah, I, this, um, this resolution came up a few weeks ago, but we haven't met. So, even though, one of the reasons that it came up was when Jimmy Kimmel was taken off the air for exercising free speech, and we all know what's going on in this country right now, and it's terrible. And I didn't grow up in this United States. Through my education and stuff, I never thought we'd be at this point where people are being, SWAT teams coming in, dragging people out. It's just like an oppressive time, and I, I can't believe it's happening in this country. So, this is just one way of saying that the First Amendment is the most important amendment, that we have the right for free speech. So, I hope everybody can approve on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, since you're all co-sponsors, this will be a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution passes. Mr. Holley?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice Resolution One-Twenty, One-O-One-Twenty-Five-R, and ask for its introduction and roll call vote.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
A resolution of the Common Council appointing Warren Hamilton as a member of the Community Police Review Board.
Discussion on this resolution. Mr. Holley?
Yes, Mr. Hamilton appeared in front of the Public Safety Committee and unanimously was approved to serve on the Community Police Review Board. Mr. Hamilton has served previously, was vice chair, has the training, he's ready to hit the ground running, and we're very lucky to have him come in and be able to, you know, serve. All our positions have been filled, and I want to, at this point, bring out that the mayor's office has three positions for years now that they have not filled. And I will be introducing legislation in the near future that after a certain amount of time, if the mayor can't fill those positions, the council will gladly find people to serve this important board. One of the things is, there's supposed to be nine people there, nine people to divide the work. Right now, we have six people, and they're all working extra to cover that extra thirty percent that's missing. So, I wanted publicly to say, this, this cannot go on, and we'll have to do something about it in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holley. Any further discussion? Mr. Anani?
Thank you, Mr. President, and just want to congratulate, uh, Mr. Warren Hamilton for his willingness to serve. I was in the interview process, the meeting, but I hear nothing but great things, particularly about the work that you do. I just want to let you, remind you also too, that the CPRB is something that's really important and near to many of us on the Common Council, and I want to make sure that, you know, when it comes to level of independence, that you're not beholden to any elected official, not the corner office, but the people of the City of Albany. And the person that you're taking their seat, fought diligently for this city, hard worker, somebody who was passionate about justice and making sure that people held accountable. So, to see that you feel you're going to be feeling, you have big shoes to fill, but ultimately, with everything I've heard so far, I think you're the right candidate for this position. So, I just wish you all the best, and always remember, you're here to be on the board to represent the people, not any elected official, not the corner office, not leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, can the clerk please call the roll?
Adams.
Yes.
Anani.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Conti.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Pharaoh.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Flynn.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Howie.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Keegan.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Kimbrough.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Zamer.
Yes.
Eleven, any affirmative?
Resolution passes. Welcome, Mr. ... Continuing on with resolution introduced, Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice Resolution One-Twenty-One, One-Zero-One-Twenty-Five-R, ask for its introduction.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
A resolution of the Common Council authorizing a public hearing regarding acquisition of, by eminent domain of Five-O-Two, Five-O-Four, and Five-O-Six Wrap Road Inn for construction of Solid Waste Transfer Station.
Thank you. Mr. Kimbrough?
Thank you. That will be a referral to the Council's Finance Committee.
Thank you. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice Resolution One-Twenty-Two, One-Zero-One-Twenty-Five-R, and ask for a vote thereon.
A vote on this? Okay. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
A resolution of the Common Council... A resolution of the Common Council declaring itself lead agency for the state environmental quality review of the city's acquisition of, by eminent domain of Five-O-Two, Five-O-Four, and Five-O-Six Wrap Road North, and declaring itself, excuse me, and declaring it an unlisted action.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Mr. Holley?
Yeah, I'm going to be opposing this. We're setting ourselves up to be the lead agency for a seeker on property that is not ours right now, that we will do a hearing and have to vote on doing eminent domain. From what I've read in the newspaper, the owners of this property do want to sell it, but they want, they don't feel what the city is offering is a fair price. I don't know what the fair price is, but I think that we really need to hear it out before we vote that we're going to, you know, it, we're putting the cart in front of the horse on this one, I believe. So, I will be voting no. Thank you.
Yeah, I feel the same way you feel. But is there any further discussion?
Excuse...
Seeing none? Go ahead.
You can support this and still vote no on the actual legislation, right, Greg?
Listen, I have no clue. I'm not a lawyer on this. Mr. Clark? I, I, I don't even know why.
It's, it's not a vote as to the proposal at all. It's just starting the secret process. I still think that the planning board should be more involved in the process, but this board has set precedents that we're going to serve as lead agency for these types of matters. So, again, a vote to be lead agency doesn't mean that we've actually done seeker. It does not mean you're supporting, opposing the project. An unlisted action just means that it has less than ten acres of disturbance and is otherwise subject to seeker. So, hopefully, the other members are comfortable voting on this. Again, it doesn't move anything forward with the actual act.
I mean, we can be seekers of property we don't own. All right. Call the roll.
Adams. Anani.
Present.
Clark.
Yes.
Conti.
Yes.
Pharaoh.
Yes.
Flynn.
Yes.
Howie.
No.
Johnson.
Yes.
Keegan.
Yes.
Kimbrough.
Yes.
Zamer?
Yes.
Nine yes, one no, one present.
Resolution passes, continuing on, Mr. Kimbrough for Ms. Frederick?
Thank you, Ms. President, I notice, uh, Resolution 123, 101, 25, and ask for its passage.
Can the clerk please read the resolution?
A resolution of the Common Council establishing the local, locally adjusted base proportion of the homestead and non-homestead classes for property taxes, tax purposes pursuant to Article 19 of the real property tax law.
Is there any discussion on this resolution, Mr.?
Uh, I'm sorry, we're voting on this, this is not going to finance?
The rates, right?
But this goes to finance?
That's what he just said, he called for a vote.
For discussion, that's what it is, so we understand the formula?
Right, and the rates.
Et cetera.
Yeah, referral to finance.
So you're going to withdraw the motion to vote and refer to finance?
Just, just for introduction purposes.
Okay. Yes, we're just introducing it, but he's referring it to finance. So, on the floor referring to finance, um, Mr. Kimbrough?
Thank you, Ms. President, be referral to the, Council's Finance Committee.
Um, and that's all, Mr. Kimbrough?
Yes, the rest of the resolutions on the agenda are held.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Kimbrough?
We're gonna do the, we wanted to do, uh, we'll do it after the meeting. Yeah, executive, we're gonna do an executive session, but.
Aye.
So the rest of the agen, items on the agenda are held, so we can move to miscellaneous?
Okay, they're miscellaneous business, I'll recognize Ms. Keegan, because I did see her hand first.
Thank you, Ms. President, I, I just want to very quickly take a moment, we were supposed to do this during caucus, and it didn't happen, so, um, I want to recognize Arianna Costello, she is a University at Albany student, former Albany High student, who is going to be interning with me, um, for the next several months, you'll be seeing her at council meetings, um, she's very interested in environment and climates, she will be working with me on updates to our complete streets to add a green streets component to bring green space equity to and throughout the city, so, everyone, please welcome Arianna to our meetings.
Welcome. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President, um, first I want to say, I am tired of riding down Trinity and making a right on, uh, Madison and seeing people smoking crack in, 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 um, broad daylight, um, we have too many kids that travel, um, through that, I, I woke up the other morning and I, I said, people who use drugs have more rights than people who don't use drugs in the City of Albany, and so, um, I come here tonight and I see a childhood friend in the audience, and I go over and I just say, you know, hey, what's going on? And, you know, we, um, do a lot of discussion, discussing about issues in the City of Albany, but, you know, here it is, another budget, and we have no, um, approach to, uh, to deal with something that is, um, knocking people out of apartments, you know, when we think about homelessness, it, like, like, um, the gentleman said, you know, a, a mentor of mine said, you know, um, one decision away from being homeless, that's a real statement, and, you know, I always use myself, I got a letter in the mail the other day from my, um, landlord, and it said something like, after reviewing the, um, building's, um, uh, bills, you know, we feel the need to, uh, raise your rent eighty-six dollars, and I just thought about what did my apartment contribute to the expenses of the building, and it was, it was none, and, you know, um, they have created a market in Albany where, whatever the landlord, you're at the mercy of your landlord, they determine a value, they determine, um, a bunch of things that you are affected by the decisions that they make, and I just say that I know that, um, I'm fortunate enough to be able to absorb, um, these, uh, changes that come my way, but everybody is not, um, fortunate enough, and, you know, we are in another budgeted season, and we're just doing the same stuff that we've been doing over and over, giving money and more money to, um, the same departments, and, you know, we're hearing people complaining about the quality of life in our city. And, you know, I feel, as the Chair of Housing, it's like, we, like, I almost feel hopeless on things that we should be able to do something about it, because we gave buildings and codes a whole bunch of, um, we empowered them to enforce rules, but it seems like the rules are only enforced against residents and business owners, you know, um, my, um, um, the person who owns my building got fined eight thousand dollars by the state, that means that it was opportunities for buildings and codes to, um, um, establish some fines, and I think that as long as people are allowed to conduct business with renters as they are in the City of Albany, they're going to keep on doing the same things, and it's unfortunate, and I think that it's something that, um, there has to be something that we can do, um, because like I said, we empower, uh, buildings and codes to be able to do some of the things that they're doing, and, you know, the calls that I receive, how businesses are, um, getting visits, uh, um, in the middle of doing a business transaction, and they come in and shut them down, I think that, um, it should be, um, some type of support for, um, people that are in real bad situations, and, you know, I'm just so tired of hearing how our community is reaching out to departments that's supposed to be, um, working for the residents, and all they're getting is a, the, the, um, merry-go-round, so, um, these things are, 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 are getting bigger, you know, as I was writing down some of the things, um, some of the, uh, stuff that, um, we're struggling with in this city is just getting larger, and, you know, I'm tired of seeing faces that I'm seeing, um, come into here, we, we got people that are workers, you know, um, Benji Johnson has been a worker my whole life, you know, um, and, and, uh, we are, you know, we have to be able to figure this stuff out, because, you know, um, things are going to happen to people, and we don't want people that have supported our city, uh, pay taxes, put their kids through our, um, schools, you know, stayed here and been a productive members, to, uh, fall flat on their face without us having a plan to deal with the things that we're struggling with, so, I, I sympathize every time that I have to hear someone come in here and talk about, um, issues dealing with rental properties, you know, um, uh, you know, I wished we had the answer, I wish we could figure it out, and I asked them not to leave, so that they could know that it is, um, beneficial to come down here and have this conversation with us, and that we, um, hear them, and we're gonna, um, try to do something about it, uh, uh, I want Albany to be better for all, you know, um, definitely I want Albany to be better, um, for the second ward, but, um, that gentleman that came in and spoke about, um, inclusionary housing, we need more people that understand this stuff, um, clear to come down here and speak to this, because I said, the messaging and program, and I'm sorry if I'm a little long-winded tonight, but it's, it's, it's painful to, um, listen to some of the stuff that comes out of the Mayor's Office attacking the work that we do on behalf of the people, and, um, I just hope that my colleagues stand strong, we did what we did because it was in the best interest, and it's a lot of money getting Ray come, um, down the pipeline, we should need to set that money up so it works best for our city, thank you.
Mr. Adams? I think I saw your, Mr. Adam, oh, Mr. Conti?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, I just want to acknowledge the tenants from the Amstel who are here tonight, uh, which is in my ward, um, and I'm aware of the issues there, I've worked with the Building Department on some of them, but I know there's more work to be done there, and I'm committed to working with you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Conti. Seeing no further? Mr. Kimbrough?
I'm sorry?
Mr. Kimbrough?
No. What I missed, oh, so, we can adjourn, we can adjourn an executive session, correct? We'll go into executive session and then do we have to come back?
Uh, if you're looking to enter executive session, you would have to make a motion for that before you adjourn the meeting.
Right, 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 yeah, so, but, we can, you, make a motion to go into executive session and discuss the personnel issue. Sound right?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, so now we're good, so everyone has to leave. Right, we can end this, we can.
Gotta have a quorum.
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye!
Me and adjourn.